This hearing is open prior to that motion. And we're called to order. We've set the pledge of allegiance. We've adopted the agenda. Any public comments concerning the Currie Transit Service District, Special District? Hearing none. Approve the minutes?
No minutes.
Well, it says.
Oh, and that one, it's a different one, yeah. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Yep. No minutes? Okay.
I don't think so.
I just was doing what it said, JJ. Public hearing, resolution to adopt Transit Service District budget. We've heard this at budget meetings, so...
I make a motion to adopt the Currie County Transit District budget.
Okay. Got a second?
Chair.
A motion in a second. All in favor say yes?
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero.
I make a motion to set the appropriations for the Currie Transit budget.
Got a second?
Second again.
All in favor say yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero.
I make a motion to impose the tax.
Gee, I'm glad he's doing the motion. Second.
Okay. All in favor say yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero. That public hearing is now closed, adjourned. Thank you. The next one is Currie County Budget Hearing. I don't have that.
Okay.
There it is. I do have that one, so... Motion to adopt amendment of the agenda.
I make a motion to approve the agenda.
Where are we on that? Do you have that handy?
It's right here.
Let me see what you got, please. By the way, I'm sorry I couldn't spell 4-H correctly.
Right.
Okay. Okay.
So, motion to approve the agenda.
Oh, wait, first you open the hearing.
Open the hearing, call the order. We've set the pledge.
I make a motion to adopt the agenda.
Okay.
Second, Mr. Chair.
All in favor say yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero. So, public comments? Anybody want to public comment on the public hearing for the county budget? David Barnes.
David Barnes, County Treasurer, but again, I'm speaking as a member of the public. I sat in for most of the Budget Committee meetings, and I just want to give my sincere thanks to the members of the Board of Commissioners and the members of the Budget Committee for the work that they did on this. It took a long time. There was a lot of meetings to get through. I really, really want to recognize the work of Director Rickett in putting this together and the hard work that he did in coming up with this. We started out with a $5.8 million shortfall in our budget, and by the time it was done, by the time Director Rickett was done, I believe we're down to about $2 million. And I just think that he should really be commended for the work that he did on this, and I want to go on public records recognizing that. Thank you.
Thanks. Anybody else like to speak to the public comments section? Okay, hearing none. So... I guess maybe I should ask this at the beginning. Is... So, number four is public hearing, resolution to adopt the Currie County budget. I had one question or one thing I'd like to bring up. It's not huge, but it's just something that's... Is this where I do that, Anthony, or did...?
Yes.
Okay. And so, during the budget process, we took the recommendations of the Compensation Committee, but we really didn't do what they asked, and that's okay. But we did pick and choose a little bit, and I was not in favor of it back then, and I would like to bring that up this morning. I talked to Brad last night before he left and said, you know, if I get somebody to vote with me, it might happen, but it might not. And my thing is, we pick and choose, you know, which elected official... And this is just concerning elected officials, and...
Is that salaries, Mr. Chair?
Salaries, yeah.
Compensation.
Compensation, and fairness, and pay equity, and all that stuff. And what we decided in the Budget Committee was 5% raise for the sheriff. I can't remember with Dave, 8%? Eight and a quarter? And then let everybody else go. I would like to propose this today, and Brad said it's not that big a deal to change this, is we gave all employees... He's smiling. Maybe it's a bigger deal than I thought. But we gave all the employees a 3% raise. And I'm proposing today that we do that same thing for the elected officials. And part of the reason I'm saying this is I've talked to some of the folks that will someday be in positions that are elected, they aren't right now, and we are not doing a good job in succession planning. And I believe that part of the reason that Sheriff Ward, his captain, you know, he always has to make more than the captain, is because of that. And... So, if we just did a 3% for everybody, and if you don't want it, I mean, I think last year Dave said, you know, there was a raise for the treasurer, and he said he didn't want it, and that's perfectly, perfectly okay in my estimation. But I just think it's... We're not... Oh, I guess it's just called succession planning. We're not building up... You know, the elected officials have a path to... It's easier for us to say, oh, you know, and under pressure, sometimes from a Budget Committee or whatever, to say, and to say, no, I won't take a raise this year. But I'm asking if there's... And there can be lots of discussion, if there's somebody that, just 3% for all elected officials for this year. I asked Anthony, and it's under, it's $13,000.
Under $15,000.
Under 15, so 13-something.
So, what you're saying is you're bringing the sheriff...
Wait till you're recognized, please.
Yeah, oh, yeah, go ahead. Oh, it's okay.
You know what, pal?
It's okay. It's okay.
That's the way it's done.
Guys, focus. Go ahead.
Raise your hand. You just spoke without raising your hand.
Yeah, it's raised now.
I forgive you both. Question? Go ahead.
So, what I'm asking is, are you reducing the sheriffs from five to three? Are you reducing the treasurers from eight and a half down to three?
Yep, everybody gets three.
You can't. It's got to be above the captain. He has to be, by state law, above the captain.
It will be.
At 3%?
Well...
Well, I think the word you're looking for is compression. 3% makes him above me, so...
Yeah, but he got a 3%, and you get a 3%, so how...
Well, I'm just saying, the word you were looking for is compression issues. If you give all the non-represented employees a raise, but you don't do anything for the non-represented elected officials, then you start getting into that compression issues where they're making more than us.
Yeah. But Sheriff, tell me, so if captain gets a 3%, and you get a 3%, you'll still be making more than him, right? Because you make more than him right now.
I don't know what the salaries are. I don't pay attention to that. I don't care about the money. It's never been about the money. It's just about what the law says, and I follow the law exactly, so...
Yeah. But I mean, I'm not a mathematician, but I know if he makes more than the captain, and they both get a 3% raise, he still makes more than the captain. Does that make... Am I wrong on that? Chris?
Well, I just want to make a comment on this. Last year, we give, outside the recommendation, we give a 13% and a 14% raise to our treasurer and our clerk, because they haven't had a raise in a couple of years. Nobody else got a raise. Now, you've got... You want to give everybody a raise. We're $6 million short on our budget. We're using ARP money. We're using road fund money. And even the Budget Committee, or even the Compensation Committee, looked at us and said, "We are not legally allowed to take into account the current state of the county's budget." "We give our recommendations strictly on..." With that, we're not allowed to take that in. So, that to me was, and I believe it was to the entire Budget Committee, a statement that they probably wouldn't have recommended raises, given the current state of the county, but they're not allowed to take that in. And now, we're going to tell the citizens of this county that we're going to give everybody a 3% raise.
The seven elected officials?
It's just for me. A lot of elected officials are getting ready to retire, and they want that benefit, all they can get, on their pears and their retirement funds, and I'm starting to wonder if that isn't more what this is about than anything else, because this is... This stinks, is what it does. It stinks. Our Budget Committee and our Compensation Committee both alerted us to this, and this stinks.
Court?
Well, thank you. 3% cost of living. We're talking about eight elected officials here.
Seven. Is it eight?
It's eight, I think. We want to pick on the clerk and the assessor, when they went many years without a raise?
They want two.
And the Compensation Board recognized that, took action, recommended. We were late, but at least we showed the respect to giving them that increase, and then it still leaves them behind. As far as the treasurer goes, Mr. Barnes, he agreed last year that if we got him a deputy or part-time worker, that he would forego any raise, okay? The previous treasurer didn't have a backup person, although she did remind us several times, "I could use a little extra help here, because I am retiring. I'd like to build a trillion someone." 3% less than $15,000, and we're just going to pick two of the eight elected officials? I made it clear all through the budget process, how in God's name can we justify any pay raises at all, elected officials or otherwise. I'm standing by that. I know I'm not getting paid enough. It just ain't there. So, I'm not asked for it, but I certainly deserve a 3%, and so did the other seven elected officials here. That keeps us in line with the rest of the county workforce, that we've given at least 3% of cost of living adjustment. Inflation right now is, well, it's higher than the Biden approval rating, but it's around, what? Average of 8, 9, 10%? So, I appreciate that you brought this up, Chair Herzog, and, you know, I don't want any pay raises. I don't... I'm not going to be beat up with the law, you know, that the compression issue, I think you make a very good point. It's obviously right there with the 3%. It's treating everybody fairly and equally. It's not picking and choosing. That's all I got. Thanks.
Chris?
The Budget Committee last year said, "No raises." This board changed that and gave raises to the treasurer and the clerk.
Assessor and clerk.
And that we follow...
Assessor, I'm sorry, that's assessor and the clerk. I misspoke, so...
Yeah, don't interrupt. No interrupting.
So... You know, now, the Budget Committee and the Compensation Committee, in so many words said... Compensation Committee said, "Well, we can't take this into account, so here's our recommendations, but given the state of the county, we can't do that, or we're not allowed to take that in." And then the Budget Committee says no to the other elected officials. And again, this board wants to change. How can we expect people, qualified people, to come in and do our budget, be our Budget Committee, when their recommendations aren't going to be recognized, and private meetings are going to change that?
Well, that's a speculation, sir, if I may, Mr. Chair.
Well, just a second.
That's a speculation.
Dave?
And...
Just a second, you can, you got a question?
David Barnes, County Treasurer. The Compensation Committee recommended a 16.5% raise for the treasurer's office to keep it in line with other treasurers in the state. The office is currently the lowest-paid treasurer's office in the state. The Budget Committee and this board approved an 8 and 1/4% raise, half of what was recommended by the Compensation Committee. If you're going to cut that to 3%, keep it.
Mary?
I don't want a raise. If you're going to cut me from 16 and 1/2 to 3, please just keep it, and I'll work for what I make now.
Mary? Well, go ahead, Court, and tell Mary gets up there.
Thank you. So, you worried about getting other people to apply for these jobs and wanting to work hard for this county? We talked about it with the Finance Director. We talked about it. You just mentioned public officials. So, we disrespect six out of the eight. That's how I interpret it, and I don't like it, okay? That goes for all eight of the elected officials in this county. You're disrespecting six of the eight. Thank you.
Mary?
I have two things to say about this. I watched the budget meetings, and I heard the decision to give Dave about 8%. And the sheriff, of course, by law, has to be given what he's entitled to, and I agree completely with Commissioner Pash. Not only am I outraged by this, given that you have basically taken, seized, the ARP funds from the mouths of hungry children and senior citizens whose lives are at stake. You know what? I live on after I pay my electricity and my rent because of the housing crisis, which was partially the result of the COVID. I had $35 this month for my medicine and for everything else, my medical, I have to pay my own medical, everything. And you want a raise. Additionally, I mean, we're in a state of crisis here. I'm sorry, this is not the time for a raise. Additionally, how on earth are you going to convince the citizens to vote for a tax if you take a raise? You might want to talk to commissioners like Commissioner, former Commissioner Rhodes, and ask him what happened when they gave themselves a raise and then tried to convince the citizens to pass a tax. It will not happen. I'm telling you that out there, at that time, the word that all of us were saying repeatedly to each other was, "Can you believe they took a raise?" That, I mean, it didn't die down for years. So, anyway, those are my two cents as a peasant of the realm.
Okay, just a second. Mary, just a second. So, all these failed, because the commissioners, there's only two passed, and they both had...
Yeah, named the two to pass.
Well, it's because they had marijuana in them.
Yeah.
I, you know... I hear what you're saying, and I appreciate it, but I just, I think we're doing a disservice even to our up-and-coming elected officials, because the reason the sheriff makes more than the captain is because why else would you want to, if you were the captain, and... Does that make sense? Why would you want to...
How about this? How about generate some revenue and then give yourselves a raise? How about that?
Just not a raise, if I may, Mr. Chair.
Cost of living increase, whatever you want to call it.
Yeah, that's what we've done for every employee of the 120 we have here, or at least are working towards that if we haven't already succeeded.
Chris?
We had, as I recall, and I could be wrong, but we had two discussions about this exact thing in Budget Committee this year. And that was moving the consumption tax forward. How are we going to get voters to vote for a consumption tax knowing that the elected officials in this county got a raise? And I believe it will set it up for failure, and that's just my personal belief.
But there's, you know, there is, I don't know how many employees we got altogether.
125.
120s plus. They all got 3%, and we're talking $13,000. We're going to give a 5 and an 8. I just, I don't know, you know...
Employees are looked at differently, Commissioner, than elected officials are. They're just looked at differently. For some reason, the public looks at officials as... I don't know. They just look at them different. I can't think of the word that I just had on my head.
Right.
But they're...
Well, I'm tired of being looked at differently. Anybody else got a comment? Dave?
Yeah, I believe the word you're looking for is they look at you as leaders, and they look at you to set an example. And when the county is in financial trouble, the example you need to set is to not take more. That's, I believe that's what Commissioner Pash was looking to say. You know, I understand...
Go ahead.
I understand wanting to give everybody a raise, but like I just told you a moment ago, keep mine again. You know, I'm willing to forego for the benefit of this county. You know, I took this job for the benefit of this county. I'm willing to forego another raise for it, but you know, to, I just, like you said, I just, you know, you proposing $600,000 worth of new vehicles, you proposing a 3% raise for elected officials, we're never going to get a tax passed, any type of tax question passed, when that's what the people see. You know, I'm sorry, that's my opinion also. But you know, I look at things, and this is what I see. And if you want to bring in more revenue, you want to try to get a consumption tax through, giving every, taking raises yourself just isn't the way to do it. Thank you.
Court?
This is a great discussion. 2018, I took a $20,000 pay cut, so I think that shows a bit of commitment. And that was because I said prior that I would look seriously at a director, excuse me, a county administrator. I wasn't in favor of it, but if I had supported it, to pay the bills, I would take a $20,000 pay cut. Find somebody else in Currie County history that has offered to do that. The point is, to get a cost of living increase and then have to beg for it, I'm just really, really disappointed, and we didn't follow the Compensation Board's recommendation for commissioners getting a 6% raise. We forego that, or what's the right word there? Disregarded that, which I was supportive of, so... Cost of living, if that dooms us, because when we're out trying to get, find new revenue, at least I have been the last five years I've been here. I've been consistent on that. I haven't gotten any help. So, I'm not giving up, staying the course. I think it is, there is something to be said about certainly the message we send. And if somebody wants to beat the counter that cost of living is a raise, I'm sorry about that, but you know, the commissioners really haven't had a raise since 2010. Very small increments along the way, so... I think you're on the right track, but if you don't want to, if this is going to create this kind of dissension, although as I said, I think it's been a good discussion, then don't do any raises, period. That's what I recommended during the Budget Committee. And, you know, yeah, I think we deserve, certainly deserve a 3%, you know, so, okay, that's all. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Well, I don't think that it's even possible with unions. You can't, you know, if you have a contract or... I don't know how that, I don't know how that works. Who can speak to... Anthony can speak to that.
Oh, you mean like freezing all pay raises for employees? Yeah, no, we have union negotiations.
We talked about that in the Budget Committee.
You can't freeze a contract.
And you can't get another one signed, or you can't get another contract without putting in the verbiage, a cost of living...
Or cost, excuse me.
Cost of living increase. So, right, Anthony, I mean, two years, three years, five years, it doesn't matter. I just, you know, I brought this up. Anybody else from the public want to say anything? Or employees? So, whether it lives or dies, I'll make a motion that the the elected officials get a 3% raise, and those who do want to decline that are more than welcome. That's my motion.
Can you change the motion to 3% cost of living, Mr. Chair?
Cost of living? What did I...
That would be my, you said raise, that'd be my preference.
3% cost of living allowance or whatever, so...
I'll second that, as long as it's equal to all eight elected officials.
And everybody has a right, and Anthony?
It's a minor technicality, but the DA's salary is set by the state, and so I think...
Excuse me, it is seven. No, my apologies on that.
That's the deal, right? So, he's not paid by us, okay? So, it's seven elected officials. Got a motion and a second? Any other discussion?
Mr. Chair, you verified with the Finance Director Rickett that this was, I want to make sure this is, we're talking a total of $13,000 here.
Well, I...
I mean, give or take.
I gave Brad a heads-up that this could happen.
Okay.
But I asked Anthony if he could give me that number.
Yeah, so the exact number, I got this from Julie Swift, would be $13,521 increase over the course of a year at 3%.
Brad?
I haven't verified anything, no.
About?
About that number.
Right. No, but I...
That's coming from payroll, but I haven't verified it.
But I did ask you if...
It's fairly easy math.
If we can make this happen before Friday, when you're done.
I can make the changes. It requires going in and adjusting everybody's budgets, but I can make it work.
Okay. Any other question, discussion? Matt? No. Total for the year. Julie?
Excuse me. So, the $13,000 is giving a 3% to the clerk, the assessor, the three commissioners. The treasures, 8 and 1/4 was already built into the budget, as well as the sheriff's 5%.
Oh, okay.
So, those are already in there. So, it's just for the other elected officials that didn't have anything in the budget.
So, you're going to increase that by about $4,000? Is that 13 to, if we do it actually?
It would actually decrease the current budget, because the treasurer is budgeted at 8 and 1/4, and the sheriff is budgeted at 5%. So, it would be a $13,000 and change for the other five. Then it's going to actually reduce the treasurer and the sheriff.
It's less? Yep.
So, is it hard to figure out that number?
No. But doesn't matter.
Well, I'll make it less, because I won't take mine.
Yeah, I don't know what the difference would be.
Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor say yes?
Yes.
Yes? Opposed, say no?
No.
Motion carries two to zero.
So, you don't have to put me on the list, Julie. Leave me off the list.
To three. Court?
Yes.
It's a, it'll be a revised, yeah, revision in the budget. Nope. Nope. So, right now, I'll entertain a motion to resolution to adopt the...
Accept the budget as amended?
As amended. Entertain a motion.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chair.
Do I have a second? Second? All in favor say yes?
With discussion?
With discussion, yes. What do you got? Any discussion?
I'd hope that we get through today with, yes, a little bit of, a little bit of comment. Yeah, I was really hoping we'd get through today with a pretty minor disagreement, and we could go forward in a real strong and united group, we try and find revenue. There was a new spirit within the Budget Committee toward those ends, towards those goals. You know, time after time, you hear the politicians say, "We don't have a spending problem. We have a revenue problem." If you followed me in the last three or four years, you'd understand why I say we have both. And that goes back to what I referenced a moment ago, as far as me volunteering the $20,000 pay cut for the county administrator, and that's when things got worse over a three-year period. And if you don't believe me, do your research, so that we don't ever go down that path again. And I'm going to be there, running with a torch, I can assure you, because we do have a spending problem outside of most of our budgets, most of our departments, so that's no way to castigate any of those efforts. You know, you heard Court calling earlier, say, "Smaller government," you know, our founding fathers, they said it up to, "We would have less government." You see what's happening at the national level? You see what's happening at the state level, the spending that's going on? Currie County has to be separate from that approach to spending before you get the money. That's why I've been so vehement, so aggressive on, "Wait, guys, wait. Here's what's happening. This is before you got here, okay, primarily." You look at my budget meeting, and I'd asked the public to look at some point, May 10th, 13 months ago, the warning I gave the Budget Committee, and look at where we are now and see if that didn't make sense. Ask. Starts at 20 minutes, and ends at 28, 24. Really encourage you on that, and maybe it'll help us, so that we don't keep going down this path. That's about all I have, just a little bit more.
What could you do? Did I get a commissioner's comments or something? Because this is, you know...
I got, give me one minute. This is a culmination of several years, and how we, we're still $2 million down, and we're taking ARP funds. And I have to support that, because... And I have to support that because if I don't, then we're not united and we're right back where we started. So that's a hard pill for me to swallow. Cost me $120 to fuel my vehicle up and that, and it's a small tank, so we've got a lot of issues and we have to be on our toes. And it's going to take, it's going to take some real commitments. Are we consolidating departments and programs? Are we serious about looking for ways to be more efficient? All this has to come into play in the next few months, or we're going to be failing our people. That's where I stand, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Okay.
I just have one quick comment on this as well. I will, and I hope Treasurer Barnes will continue to work on the consumption tax to get this through. And I hope what's happening here right now inspires all the elected officials that are getting a raise to go out and help push this consumption tax so that we can fund our sheriff's department. But this, I believe, will sink it. That's all I have.
Where were you three years ago and two years ago?
Okay, that's enough. Questions been called for? There are no more questions? All in favor, say yes?
Yes.
Yes? Opposed, say no?
No.
Motion carries two to one.
Clarification, so Commissioner Pash, you are voting against the budget?
Yes.
And that's based on?
That's just my clarification. I'm voting against the budget, the way that you, this board has changed it.
So look for a motion to, for a resolution to set appropriations. I'll make that motion. Do I have a second?
Second, Mr. Chair.
Been moved and seconded to the, for the resolution to set appropriations? All in favor, say yes?
Yes.
Yes? Opposed, say no?
No.
Motion carries two to one. I'll look for a motion to a resolution to categorize and impose tax.
So move, Mr. Chair.
Been moved and seconded? I'll second that. All in favor, say yes?
Yes.
Yes? Opposed, say no?
No.
Motion carries two to one. Public hearing is adjourned. We have, it's 11:38. The next thing on the agenda is
Aye.
Aye, signature authority for county accountants, David Barnes, Treasurer.
Good morning again, David Barnes. Currently, Finance Director Rick